It's six o'clock, please.
Halloween.
It's Wednesday, September 4th. This is our regular board meeting. First up on the agenda is to introduce our new treasurer. Mary Jane has come from us from the village of Frankfort and she started yesterday. We've already made some significant progress on some things and it'll be exciting for you.
Thank you. Thank you for the opportunity.
First up on the agenda is. I'm sorry, Matt, would you have? The piano is all set. The piano is all set. Okay.
Minutes.
Minutes. Sorry.
Don't start jumping around now.
Here we go. Uh, we need to approve the minutes from the Pluded Board Meeting of August 19th. I made a couple dramatical things.
I lost them.
Second.
Warcraft number seven, general, one hundred and fifty-six thousand, fifty-nine dollars and seventeen cents. Water, twenty-five thousand, nine hundred and seventy-six dollars and fifty-one cents. Sewer, six thousand, two hundred and sixty-seven dollars and sixty-three cents, total of one hundred and eighty-eight thousand, three oh three thirty-one. Payroll number six, one hundred and twenty-five thousand, nine hundred and sixty-four dollars and forty-nine cents. There is no transfer.
Redoing the, uh, the, uh, the. Second.
So at the conversation, I mean, I may have a hush about self-storage facilities. Uh, and ask that we kind of rebatten when the. Twenty-twenty-three amendment, uh, placed then in T five Village Center. Uh, but upon review, uh, we realized they're not allowed to let industrial district. I think there's, uh, more than one building that. Commoded self, uh, self-storage facilities and that self-storage facilities are not appropriated in T five Village Center. Self-storage doesn't necessarily lend itself to that and it's kind of low. Benefits that we just want a gravity in industrial district. So we're proposing to remove them from T five and then another system self-storage facility. Uh, in place them into the light industrial district. Uh, they would remain allowed heavy induction districts, but continue to be provided elsewhere, including the Robert District. District even though that's new policy, but that's pretty standard form. And we. People can continue, they can extend to a certain extent, et cetera. But we've heard of the foot goes just because they're, they're better seated there. Uh, and so we introduced a book of law. Provide some background as to why we're recommending this. Uh, we'll refer to public hearing, uh, I'll have to refer to Albany County Plan Board. But ultimately to rebooster to the county colony because, uh, just the all district, uh, but town, uh, no other districts. So no other teams have that to refer screw that. So everybody should have the type of the interactive resolution. Uh, you need to do, should make the where access for.
Do you mind having any questions for?
Uh, yeah. Why does it need to go to the county? So, uh, your state village law requires any, uh, zoning dependent that. Could involve popping five hundred people to find their, the birds of town. So since the light industrial districts. Right back corner of village. Directly applies to town. So any type of things that.
What about the city of Albany?
So the light industrial, uh, district is not what the. Kind of done with the city of Albany. Uh, you know, and I took a look at. No other.
Yeah, what kind of self-storage facility?
Yeah, by the way, so. And then for the T five district that's center of the village, that's not. And typically, I think we've ever. And so just to tell everyone, it's clear, you know, L I district is basically. Yeah, Elwood, uh, north and south. And then, you know, with heavy industrial district is.
So do you need the resolution read in? So we just need, uh, basically.
Just bottom, like, made a motion to hold a public meeting.
Exactly. I think we all get the reason, you know, to.
But just need to turn local law numbers.
You page number four.
Okay. Can you want to do that? Okay, you don't want to read the entire? Okay. No, we don't need to do. Oh, just one, just again, just saying. After discussion, uh, I, I'd like to make a motion to hold a public hearing on Monday, September 23rd at, uh, twenty twenty-four at six P M. In regard to amending one sixty-nine zoning laws, those of Manans by adjusting the zoning district in which self-storage facilities are permitted. In the L I district.
Well, so it looks where that should.
Oh, okay.
They happen.
Oh, second amendment. Hold on a second.
And I'll, I'll get it to Julie tomorrow. Thanks, Matt.
Thank you. Um, okay, we've been talking a couple times about, uh, the removal. Well, we've been talking about the hose tower in general, S two fifty Broadway. The hose tower is now not used. We don't dry hoses like that anymore. Uh, there's a lot, Lobella had looked into the masonry work just required to restore it. The quote from DAPCO to actually remove it all the way down to route line is seventeen thousand, one hundred dollars. When we look at just repointing, repairing it, I think the cost was almost three times. So DAPCO has put forward a really favorable proposal and I think it's appropriate to seize on it. They did shore up the. Hose tower because some bricks were falling, so we have already paid that bill, I think, last time for twenty-three hundred.
Twenty-three hundred dollars.
Uh, to do that work. So they're going to start tomorrow. Uh, if we approve this tonight, I think it's a bargain for what they're going to do. And basically, uh, we don't ever have to spend money on repointing or repairing the hose tower again. So basically, they're just going to bring it right down to grave. Lobella did look at their specs. We're going to save some of the bricks that they're pulling from the host tower to reuse at the build, uh, around the building when we need repair bricks. And to do some other projects that are part of our capital plan for that facility or for that building. Um, and, um, we're going, they're going to use some of our trucks for our guys to save some of the costs. And dump some of the debris, um, uh, in our spoil pile. So it's kind of a partnership effort. And that's why the quote is a third of what we anticipated. This is money that's, we put in the building's budget. Uh, I think we put in fifty grand.
We put fifty thousand. Well, we always put fifty thousand of our building.
So but that money this year was targeted towards, you know, addressing this, some of the masonry issues. So this gives us not only the money to do this demolition, but also, uh, revisit and have DAPCO. Give us a quote to do some of the other maintenance work. So that's the story with that. So if we can get a motion to approve that, they can start tomorrow.
A motion?
Second. Aye. And there are water relief based companies, so they're very local and the owner is a great guy, so I hope we get to know him. Um, we got a quote for repairing the two cracks that were found during a recent diver visit at the high surface reservoir. The cost to come back and repair them is seventy-two, uh, seventy, seven thousand twenty-five dollars. They can come, I think. If it's.
I don't, yeah, I don't recall.
Okay, um, this will repair, I think it's a twenty-foot crack.
Twenty-foot crack and then.
And a three, a three, a three-foot.
Three or four foot crack.
So we're confident this is. The reason why we're still getting water out the backside of the tank. Um, and if we do this and it's successful, we don't need to spend the twenty thousand dollars. We were talking about it, about doing some perimeter drainage and pump, you know, a salt pump type drainage, uh, front drainage. I mean, did they say that if we did that repair? That they're not going to stay on. They can't care. Uh, a twenty-foot crack doesn't help. In that big, that big peg in the back. So, I mean, uh. They just can't make. Is it on a seam or is it?
Actually, it's in the middle.
It's in the middle of the floor. So that should make it easier than to repair. That should speak from the warp. If it was on a seam or something, or.
You'd get a natural crack in the foundation.
The, the, when they did the dive the last time, the edges, which is what we did on the front tank that cost all that money. And has worked. Because there's no water coming out the front. Uh. The condition of the seams in the back tank are far better. So that's why they never recommended doing repairs. But this is an obvious crack. So, uh, I don't have any. I, I'd like to make the motion. We accept the, uh, the estimate from Atlantic Underwater Services for seven thousand twenty-five. Second. All right. This is probably the last hurrah for this thing. Anything further? Thanks, Matt.
Bye, Matt.
Anything further, I think. Have a good one, Matt. Right, Mark? Yes, sir. The next thing we're filling this tank with. All relative, all relative. Okay, cement, cement is the only thing they want to fill this tank.
Albany County.
Albany County. Don and I, we have been talking for years about joining the.
Albany County, well, we, we're part of the, we're part of the Albany County Shared Services. And part of the shared services was the healthcare consortium.
Yes.
And. We'll probably explain the rest.
Okay, so we've been talking for years about how we would join this insurance group. It's basically, if you compare the Village of Manans and our employee count to a multi-thousand person organization. Obviously, the costs are just far different. So Albany County self, basically self-insures themselves. And so they have the ability as a large employer group to negotiate directly with, with, uh, with. Various components of the healthcare structure. So this, so then I was on a call with, uh, the county executive's office. And by pushing the pharmacy issue, they saved eleven million on a twenty million dollars spent. With by negotiating directly with, with, and having a private company negotiate rates for all of the various. Uh, drugs that, you know, that the, the, the population takes. And so just on the ten most prescribed drugs, uh, negotiating those to basically free. They saved eleven million dollars in the first year of using this company. So obviously, it's been successful. So the village taking part in this, we should, we should see some significant reductions versus C D P H P. And the rates are far more stable. So we asked the question of all the years this has been enacted, what's your largest increase? And it was two thousand and ten to two thousand and eleven, and it was a seven percent increase. But I think I forwarded everybody a copy.
He's with ten.
We're fourteen. And this year, we'll be lucky if we get anything less than sixteen.
So are there any other, I just have a question because I, I have the county, you know, obviously via Allison. You know, the county coverage, which has been fantastic. I got to be honest. So this is like music to my ears, you know, that we can get it. Are there other municipalities that are in this? Because they were trying to do this.
So, yeah, so for years, there was an obstacle with the insurance regulators that, that disallowed a consortium like this. Okay, now we are eligible, that they have opened their poss, the possibility. And basically, what we need to do, along with other municipalities, is submit letters of intent. So that's why I would like the board approval today. It's not signing us up for everything. It just says that if it's available.
We can look at it.
We, we're interested in participating.
Yeah.
Obviously, there's all, it comes down to the rate and all of that for final approval. But a letter of intent helps them say to the regulator, we are interested. To give you an idea of what this is equivalent to, this is the equivalent of us going back to the premier plan of C D P H P plan. But at the cost of the gold and minus us having to fund. HSA account, you know, that we use for the deductibles because of the gold, so, from platinum. So right off the bat, the rates are less than we pay currently. And we don't have to, and we don't have to fund the HSA.
And the copay, like, for drugs is zero for generic.
Yep.
Ten dollars for.
Ten fifteen dollars.
Ten, ten and fifteen, the highest goes up to fifteen.
Like fifteen dollars. So it's, it's really, it's a, it's an amazing plan, uh, you know. We're looking at sixteen percent this year, uh, as an increase, actually. Um, it's not finalized, but, but, uh, that's what the insurance regulators approved for these companies. So I think it's great. I think it's, it's something we've been looking at for a long time. Now, there, there is, uh, we have to fund a certain amount. I think one month's premium. Because if we ever come off the plan, we have to, there's something about legally that we have to have a one-month reserve. It's not hundreds of.
Basically, we're already doing that with the money that we're cutting aside to pay.
Because our insurance currently is paid in advance. We're paying now, so. It only hurts you on the way out because, just, I don't know. We also wouldn't have to have that painful meeting every December. That's correct. That's exactly correct. And it's literally Cadillac Insurance. It's the best insurance. So Teamsters for D P W, they will not be on this plan because they have their own. So this will affect village employees and, uh, police.
Unless they, they opt to go into, I mean, I don't know how that goes with their contract or.
It would have to be at the end of the contract or land.
Yeah.
If it fails. Right, yeah. Um, so, but again, the reason the Teamsters have Cadillac Insurance, right? For a reasonable, is it Cadillac insurance? Well, we used to have a whole book of those, but that from us, we have silver. With the Teamsters? Okay, then this might be something that we should look into.
Yeah.
Are the plans that we're. I'm all for a better plan, we're cheaper. The premiums are very similar to what we pay for Teamsters. So we pay. I mean, we have a good plan, don't get me wrong, but it sounds better. Right, well, I don't have a problem looking into that.
Well, the only, the only problem that you have is because yours, yours has life insurance and.
Right, there are some supplement.
You know, so there's some things that.
No, I know, I, I, they might be intertwined. Yeah.
Yeah.
Because the, the insurance is excellent. No, I know, it's fantastic. Like, for instance, they, uh, somebody wanted Miracle Air and it wasn't covered. Because that's for some reason, I forgot what she said. But they negotiated with the provider for Miracle Air and now it's a covered thing.
And they covered a hundred percent.
A hundred percent. So there's some real advantages to it. So I think, I think we should.
Because we had one employee that was looking to get Miracle Air, to get hearing aids. It was going to be sixteen thousand per ear.
Secret divine name. All right, so.
So you just need a motion to send a letter.
Just a motion to approve, uh, sending a letter of intent to the Albany County Healthcare Consortium, uh, to express our interest in the plan.
My motion.
Second. Hold on a second.
Your march is, um. He did his record activities and need a motion to approve, like, in post for thirty days.
Motion.
Second.
We all go unite. Yeah.
I won't be there till Monday. There's just like one session or something.
You're going to miss the, you're going to miss the, 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 the movie one or the movie one, but that's okay.
I think so. I thought that was too soon.
No, it's, it's a long class that you don't know about. You may, uh, I think. I have everybody's share of, for natural access. So I'm going to, when you check in. If you, I doubt you'll beat me to whatever you do. When you check into the hotel, tell me I'm going to be, you'll offer all my credit cards that you don't have to, none of your credit cards. You may have to put one per extension, but I'll face with the room of my credit card. There are a few.
Um, fifty-one Irving, that's my DM is here, that's tabled in the next meeting. All right, so, uh, Tim and I have been working on the, you know, the E D charging stations. And then I see we improved last season, the total cost. There was an error because, as a municipality. Senders are required to.
For being on wage.
So there's a slight cost adjustment for that. So, uh, but with our grant, it's less, it's going to be the total cost of the building is less than five thousand dollars.
Additional.
Additional cost. So there's a grant from National Branch, it's a grant that we got through, proving your, it's in C, B C, whatever.
Yes, C D T.
Whatever.
C D T. Capital D six.
So, uh, so I just would like approval to sign that contract for the expense to the village. Up to, like, I, I just want to be sure, I mean, I, I. But I'd like to be sure that we're getting. Yeah, it's in the.
Thank you, I appreciate it.
The jack of all we put in, yes.
Oh.
I just want to make sure everything.
No, I didn't make you.
Oh, you did?
No, I didn't, because I was asking.
Oh.
Just because the contract was revised.
Okay.
Yeah.
Decide this.
Okay.
All right, hold on a minute. So maybe go ahead and make the most.
Second. Any hints out?
Say something.
Can you hear us?
Uh, what I can hear, it sounds like you're talking from the bottom of a pool.
How about now?
That's better.
All right, we got to yell at the owl.
Turn your mic off on there.
Tim, are you motioning?
Yes, I'm making a motion to accept the revised, um, uh, cost estimation for the charging stations and windows and charge ports. Uh, to include the additional cost for, for labor prevailing wage.
Molly, argue second. All those are different. Any opposed? Aye.
We have a couple of things. Uh, I'm working with Nina Patricelli, the City Water League, to. Get Albany County to fund some trail, some cameras down the, uh, light path. So then, to converge there in the event of an unfortunate additional incident. We're looking ahead. So, uh, we're going to ask Albany County. The provider. The ballot is helping work out the, uh, so. Railway that runs through the village. They did the road, it's, you don't talk to the town? Yeah, well. Good idea, my idea, we haven't seen. Just to give you an idea, uh, four hours. I mean, for. In nineteen seventy is now thirty-two. On the side of. It's all part of the, I thought of this. Because I think the number of. There's parcels on the road right now. No longer vacant. And when I saw that, I was like, I said. Uh, Mary Jane joined, uh, because, uh, we did not have a policy in place to background check employees. And, and I worked with a. Set of, physically fifty bucks for a full background check. And so. I poured two, uh, change there. Should include that as part. And Jane is excited to sign the, uh, the, uh, this. Well.
Nothing.
So. We have a contract for the parcels. At, uh, Green County Broadway. I will be signing the, uh, the purchase and sale agreement to start that process. Just that person. Need to, uh, exactly the person can be addressed for me.
We probably didn't want to make a part of this. Maybe three ninety. The deal is we want to have two different parcels.
Because we have to join.
So you have to do that through the town.
I'll just have to do a parcel.
Excellent. It's, it's a lot to work with this.
Um. The Albany County R B A has been working, updating its code. Of the factors that they have pushing is to basically not. Wire into it from the municipalities, the school, that's the village. Not supporting that piece, they're revised. Policies and I signed on to a letter today that basically realized that with several municipalities throughout the country. Including Cape Sheen, we have our, City of Albany. And that made that meeting, it was supposed to discuss tonight. Uh, I expressed that letter that I put up, probably everyone. But the village now. It was supposed to be a meeting tonight to discuss this, to do the issue of non-stormers, the I D A, and they tabled that. Again, that's a, what we have. This was also. Uh, it's asking, we have a great relationship. Should not have to hear. It's input from others there. I'm going to push it. Other projects that we have on the village. Supposed to be tires that are. Used to be good, uh, village and person, I guess. Um, we're getting some proposals to that project. Mediation into action, and we should have those quotes, like, some, um, contract information soon. It's complicated because it's the. I can make dialogue on it. Especially on this person. Should.
What are transmission goals?
Um. Let's see, we're still working with this. And together with the plan and then in action, committee, the, uh, some presentations for the committee for all sorts of parts. Should happen, I see. Well, should be just. We're still working with the ballot on the red line. This project, getting funding for basically all of those light service lines. Works due in October, early first.
I, I talked to, um, Jason, I can get the list of every veto. Yeah, I, I talked to, um, Jason, I can get the list of every beater.
Of course. She, she's invisible. She's coming to get the smaller sections.
I look, I look in everyone in the world, so it wasn't in.
I recently met a regional, this was the director of GT for region. Yes, and, um. We're looking at some potential plans to bring three seven eight down to Greg at one three that. Back in two thousand seven, two thousand eight. This is an interesting project that solves a bunch of problems with all these challenges. And, uh. This, the dev team to, to keep that. Showing master. So, there's a lot of pieces to this, and it's really interesting. Possibility that we can talk about. Um, could Manny give this, uh, initial review? Change. Music, this one. Work up some plans and some ideas for us, but it's really cool. It's gonna be a great, a great chance, if it's ever funded, but it basically creates some roundabouts, this is good. And we can. Talk next meeting about some of their concept ideas to really improve that area. See. Yes, uh, Blue Wall has been doing some grading work. Just left. Um, they were about to open the whole. Half of the building that has the.
Different area.
She should pass one to you.
She's gonna go and get her final. She took her mind to the city, she's gonna, she does the final change.
So this is exciting for them to get, to get that audience. Um. Let's see. That's it.
That was it.
There's a grant for living building, uh, tomorrow's. September tenth. Who's it? September the eleventh.
Oh.
The place is absolutely, I don't know what to do.
There's a, next, next. Our best meeting can be moved to the twenty-third, if I can, if you already approved it, but just a reminder.
See.
Uh, I did, that, that tale of what you said about, uh, DOT, that project. Uh, DOT, we're developing. New York State DOT will be here Tuesday, excuse me, Monday tonight. Republic, we're going to be, uh, public, uh, holidays for seven eighty-seven. Uh, all residents will want to do ten, uh, we're also going to do a preview of what Bella has, uh, as I've said, created for. Looking at, uh, down the little river area, uh, we could, we're having some discussions with DOT, uh, about as well. So, this, what is that topic at seven eighty-seven? Uh, this public, the brand just speaking about, on that bridge, the, uh, this, this three seventy-eight that being quite a grade. These things over the next summer, which are game changers, you can see, kind of new. So, it's all very, so.
Sixty-nine.
Sixty-nine. Uh.
There'll be some renderings. Some renderings of some concepts.
Interesting.
Can't even imagine. In partnership. In the very beginning of the, trying to ask Greg. Some nights last night. A lot of people come to have some stories part. So, uh, this is that. Sixty-nine, sixty-nine.
Um, there are also a part of the trees along the main road, um, I don't mind, there's arches. You know, really nice. Yeah, I mean.
Up and downsides.
Yeah. So, there's a tree that, yeah.
And always that corner of Jones.
Yeah.
Yeah, she's the one.
Yeah, I know, yeah, probably. That's, yeah. Jones along the glass. Yeah, thirty-two. Yeah, yeah, yeah. Yeah. So, there's a few trees, I know I wasn't, I'm trying to create my point, I was, come on, guys, we're dumping that.
Okay.
Yeah. I mean.
Turn the way to the roof. I love it.
I think we're just injured. And she's saying it would be different unless I was.
I mean, it's there. And they're talking on the street. Then doing. You can be standing.
Nobody generally says, you're probably not a good son.
Yeah.
Well, Mark will approach the truck tomorrow.
Unless it's December.
It's similar to that. I know there's a hydrant out front there, uh, people who live on Jones Court, I mentioned that, they have to pull out practically all the way to the street. As an alternative parking, it was a visual way, it's like multiple times. Like, you have to pull out practically instantly on Mandrill, you can see down Mandrill or up Mandrill, because it's a far spot. So close, uh, turning, like, probably on Cornell too, I don't know.
Now, it's because.
It's just the park so close and you can't see.
But you family try to park as close as they can, so they're literally parking.
I'm pretty sure it's not supposed to park in the hydrant, but. I know. And it's parked, so. Like, after I know it's been, that's the only. Someone gets on that street. But I'm sure we can, we have workshops to find it. Yeah.
I need to get some of that.
Oh, yeah, yes, but.
Yeah.
That's all. They'll look into the corner and think. School starts.
School starts tomorrow, um, so, we're gonna need reminder, I'll pass school bus. Um, and again, the finance PTA is selling moms, you can order them online, until September eighth. Hello? There's nine inch. Oh, it was twelve dollars. Um, yeah, you just get to choose the color that you want. Um, but if you don't pick them up on nine three, then I'm asking to get donated to the school. So.
Nine twenty-five.
Forty-five. One make, one.
Pick up those nine forty-five. But if you don't pick them up, the school just play itself.
It's not like.
Yeah, and then I gave you that thing about the tree branch. Um, the other thing is the, the brush at the corner of Villa, the man road, I know the guys kinda turned it back a little bit. But like, I was walking the dog. Yeah, so when you get like password Diane, there's a pretty like trees and flowers.
Yes.
Then the next step right there before you get to the corner, like, this car came around the corner because people had parked there. Like, I didn't see the car coming and they didn't see me coming. So I don't know if we can. I don't know.
Is that our problem?
I don't know, that was my question.
I was talking about, of course, on the water or gas sign.
Yeah.
To the law, like, if you're looking from your property, everything to, I was trying to get those down. To the areas. I hope you can do it as long as you don't want that.
Well, well, we'll make them do it.
Okay. No, 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 not your business.
We're gonna go, we're gonna touch, we're gonna go all down right from, we're doing, we're doing.
It just scared it off, it's the rest.
I'll, 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 I'll not take care of it tomorrow.
And then, um, the light in the park. Does that not work? Um, so, I walked before the end of last night, to be honest, because I was afraid as people exited towards the parking lot, they were gonna fall.
So. So, there's two lights and different Christmas trees.
And they don't know how to read.
And.
We actually forgot to turn on that, I don't know, I don't remember it.
So, we're putting a Monday class.
Okay.
To.
Off. Actually, I'm, I'm actually.
By the time we realize why they were. Almost time for them to go off.
Yeah.
So.
And obviously they don't have concerts that late, but it just.
Well, one of the things I, I, I emailed, um, my contact, the national grid, to ask them if there was any way that we could.
So we will, uh.
You, you gotta turn it off, you can yell what you want.
We'll look into that. I mean, huh? Tim, no.
Oh.
Maybe this is, not everybody can be on at the same time.
I know.
I'll turn it back on.
Yeah. How did that?
I've been hearing this.
Everybody.
I've been hearing it.
That or else.
That was it.
How was that?
Public comment.
Public comment. Yeah.
I like to suggest installing red markings on our private firehogs. Second, I wish to propose to construct new projects that are both by values. I'll make those proposals detailed during that year. Now, there are some buildings, streets like Blue's Avenue, the more the streets it's mentioned, the more this will. That is still remaining toward provision that they are in any debt. And as I said, I like to propose plans within every way to use your village parks and playgrounds and building to consume. Hope, right, plus I'll pay for those forest conservation projects and the new project. However, I read a whole log, like, for forest conservation project, so, very due, when I got to, I would commit one of you. Well, that, since New York State was celebrated two hundredth anniversary during that year, there, nations first led for water. Erie Canal was completed, the Indian, online, one of those ortho class resolutions to congratulate our state with this. As the first major public works project. And while seeing Erie Canal again, but it's not for me, yeah. It was a famous American state that was successfully promoted to construction. So, it's down, it's been, of course. And I wish to propose to develop a small park between third and place. Getting of Chanel's report next, in the Dallas survey. The cover half of it again, I'll make the proposals detailed that year. And since, and I'm glad to see that many of you's gotten busy, it's got, which means, but I'm still frustrated over these changes, I've had. Those supermarkets, and grocery, and, which are businesses, which has got to have. I'm also getting requested, you know, PDW guys could kindly trim the bridges of one tree and move side to side. Streets are blocking, from where we're crossing, so, where it's at. But I didn't, is this true, that they're cut down the food or they're, to the break, is this true? Right?
Um.
Looks like.
Both side, both side here.
All of both sides.
Alright.
Or no, actually this spring, the spring is when you do it so that, like, it starts to regi.
But so what I didn't consider, that still been blocking that one yellow road, that's important. Most of the, of Marcus Stone, so people could see the sign more easily. I like to prevent any very, very accident, such as cars, carrying oil or chemical. Now, of course, I was pleased that I was able to help with cleaning up the beach, I staffed a very good people, but that's done, as I promised, I'm gonna get it done. I tell you that twice a day, I'll say it six twenty, the next morning. And I've seen one go, uh, go a play sign on the east side of your slides, and they're partly blocked by, by the tree branch. And the same thing with one, to the play sign, it's been partly blocked on, where the east end of the, of the road. Just let them know, like, states, and Brian Marsh, we didn't let him do this, or the morning that you put the trailer. Then, I look tomorrow, it's fine.
Okay.
Thank you for letting me speak, uh, part of the book about this, for mission.
Okay.
You're welcome.
Well, yeah, it's a kind of sex.
Yeah.
I wish, no. But we can use some, you know, much, we're just, I'm saying, to.
Absolutely.
I mean, I, I need to, I need to maybe log out, maybe, I can, I can like it.
And we're gonna do.
Yes, if it happened to be, it's happening.
Absolutely agree, and that's the money left over, because, I mean, I'm gonna party and the whole crew, uh, did the work for bathrooms, or the museum money to buy home. Fixtures like flash games, cycle bins.
We have such a beautiful park, it is so.
They're not happy the ones that blow away.
Oh. Long time.
You, you won't be a semester. I don't have these Spanish, you know, I don't even.
I don't have good, I'm a musician, though. First to please.
First. Second. I'm gonna play it.
I would play it, but.
I, I give it.
No, I don't have it yet. You guys are a great job, I'm.
Thank you. I, I need to. Jason.
I'm ready.
Alright. We are online.
Maybe I'm lying, I'm making.
Okay, uh, we have one matter for executive session, lead a matter, Steve, has, uh, some thoughts, if you want to share it.
I'll make a vote for those executive session till six forty-eight.
Also, yeah.
Eleven thirty. I need a couple. Goodnight, everyone.
I'm waiting to.
Yeah.
Goodnight.
Goodnight.
See you now.
Thank you.
I'll be here.